Good evening. This is the City of Twinsburg Planning Commission meeting for Monday, August 18th, 2025. Roll call.
Mr. Shipley?
Here.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Holger?
Present.
Mr. Cohen?
Present.
Mr. Shidov?
Present.
Do you please stand for Pledge of Allegiance?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. We begin with the work session. The first item on the agenda is the similar use determination for the data center in the IM zone. If the applicant can come forward, name an address and an overview of what you're looking for this evening.
Good evening, gentlemen. My name is Grayson Orsini. I'm here on behalf of Shelburne Global Solutions, whose address is 2362 Nostran Avenue, Brooklyn, New York, 11210. And we are requesting a similar use designation to allow for a data center to be developed within the innovation and manufacturing classification. Specifically, we would like an allowed use or allowed access for use designation, probably allowed use here, but a conditionally allowed use would be acceptable as well. Shelburne currently owns three parcels within the IM zoning classification and is trying to figure out if it can go ahead and develop its property to enable data centers and to market the property to enable data centers to be developed. And obviously, the least amount of hurdles that the developer would need to go through in constructing the data center would make this property more easily marketable and therefore quicker to develop here. And we think this is an excellent opportunity for Twinsburg. As I was discussing with Lynn a little bit before this meeting, you know, I think there could be some direct benefits with, you know, the smaller workforce, right? We're talking about maybe 20 to 35 people, 20 people that would be working there per shift, in addition, obviously, with the construction, but also in an indirect instance where, you know, you're going to have some ancillary industries around there trying to give support to the data center, whether through, you know, providing utilities, electrician, computer software engineers, et cetera, for the data center. So there's actually a lot of really good net benefits here in allowing this property to have that use. And we do feel that data centers are similar to the uses already permitted within IM zoning due to the similar impact and the immediate land, in addition to a couple of advantages already with overallowed uses within the zone. For example, data centers operate as warehouses for Internet servers and networking equipment. The difference really is the water and electricity that you often see to really maintain the conditions for the data centers. But in a sense, that's what data centers are, right? They're storage units for computer servers. Geographically, regionally, the data centers do need to be located, you know, in or outside large metro regions, and this is exactly one of those, so to, you know, provide a kind of a direct network into where everyone else is, right? I.e., where the Internet and everyone's connected. You know, also similarly, some, also, sorry, other similar uses listed in medium industries such as scientific, control instruments, laboratories, and manufacturing that would involve kind of, you know, advanced processing or assembling in the sense that these uses also have to use large, kind of complicated digital technology in order to have the manufacturing occur. And so those are uses, obviously, that we probably wouldn't think of more as like 100% traditional manufacturing, right? These are things that would involve some kind of software component, some kind of digital component here, and that's, you know, clearly, obviously, that's what data centers are trying to do. And so we also think that the location, and you know, I was looking at the Twinsburg zoning map here, is actually an excellent location for a data center. Couldn't think of a better spot. You know, I'm from Virginia. In Virginia, we're having a lot of issues with data centers right now, particularly in Northern Virginia. Loudoun County is one that was cited. That's a notorious example where we have data centers right tucked directly behind, I'm saying directly behind, you know, suburban homes, and this isn't the instance there, right? Here, they would be marketed and developed, you know, in spaces that are tucked away from all of that. So the issues that we have as far as, you know, aesthetics, right? This looks like a big honkin' warehouse behind my house. We're not going to have that. Issues like noise, you know, these computer servers, although this is getting better, these computer servers do kind of generate like a very low humming sound, which, you know, at 3:00 in the morning, you have your window open, you might hear. You're not going to have that issue because it's right, because, you know, you're tucked away in an industrial zone. Issues such as, you know, dust, pollution, traffic, that won't be there, obviously, due to the, you know, electronic digital nature of what we're doing here, as well as the small amount of staff. So what you're going to have is a couple dozen, 20 people per shift coming in and out of this data center. If there are repairs, there are repairs. If they're going out for lunch, they're going out for lunch. I mean, really, that's what we're talking about here. So traffic-wise, this is going to be minimal. And so also, you know, too, the data centers, unlike, you know, a lot of other industrial manufacturing uses, don't really pose a health and safety hazard to nearby people. We don't have any, you know, large machinery that could explode. I mean, obviously, we're going to have like, you know, it's another building, so fire, right? But, you know, we're not going to have, there's no actual onset risk associated with just by virtue of being a data center, which is good. To the extent that there are any noise concerns, you know, particularly with the location that these are in, these can definitely be mitigated with, say, like a vegetated buffer, sound barrier, you know, discussion about where to set the location of the data centers, things like that can definitely be on the table. But again, this is much less of a concern here than where, right, we otherwise may see in like a more densely populated suburban area. And so, you know, with, there might be concerns also with, you know, potential electricity usage, potential water usage. Again, I would say that the technologies for that, for those are both getting much more efficient, but also, you know, placing them within kind of the industrial zone, you're at least grouping those with other potential uses that also have, you know, have a heavier, you know, toll on the electricity or the, you know, water there as well. So, you know, all those reasons, you know, we think that this would be an appropriate use within the innovation and manufacturing zone. Again, we don't think that a conditional use is necessary here, although if you guys feel the need to, and we might have that discussion, and we can understand that, but we do think that the benefits of this, you know, creating jobs, you know, your Twinsburg would be upgrading its digital infrastructure, you'd have higher faster connection rates, you're allowing the Internet to kind of grow and AI and all the technologies that we're seeing right now kind of grow and blossom without, you know, causing a drag on Twinsburg's, you know, Internet and electricity output, so that would be a big benefit for the town. So again, you know, it's kind of thinking about the innovation part of this, you know, innovation and manufacturing zone. I really do think that having infrastructure in place like that is going to allow for, with the better Internet and the better electricity kind of for that innovation. So, you know, for all those reasons, and obviously, you guys can think of dozens more in your head, we guys, we definitely think that this should be a similar use as opposed to a conditional use, but I'm happy to take any questions.
Thank you. Lynn, before I open it up to the Planning Commission, is there anything else that you would want to share for our knowledge?
No, ironically, I wrote at the top of my notes, the data center is such a warehouse zone.
Yep.
I think the primary characteristic is really our process that makes me lean towards finding the use similar to something we would call conditional. To make the data center a permitted use, if we're going to find it, so that's our only permitted uses, I think we would want to put some permitting on any use for screening, location of generators, setbacks from residential district. The way the charter is written, we can't really do that without going on a ballot. And so I think the most expedient option really is the conditional use pathway, which would make each individual site sort of subject to specific rules, because the way our language is written, we allow use, you know, at this site that we're speaking on this evening, we think that's permitting, it's next I for AD, no harm, foul, that would be a great limitation, but we're also permitting that on any other IM zone property. And for this permitted use, I think we would want some use-specific standards added to our zoning code that way. And to develop those use-specific standards, I think we may be looking at a ballot issue. And so we could go on a November ballot, we'd need protection looking at May ballot, and I don't see that maybe being necessary, but we can do the same thing through a conditional use on that review, and it would probably be more expedient if the owner wants to start marketing this property. Just one way of thinking about it.
Thank you. I kind of had those same thoughts and the same notes, similar to what you were just talking about. While if it was just site-specific, what you're looking for conditionally probably wouldn't be necessary, but because it's for any property in that district, I think, as Lynn said, we need that ability.
Okay.
To be able to look at it, and you said it's a case-by-case basis, there may be nothing on the property owned by your client, however.
That's fair.
That's a lots of good info.
Okay.
So, while I think, well, I think it's definitely a similar use, and I think it would fit great in the IM district, I would promote for a conditionally allowed use for the motion.
Because let me just join in appropriately here, just before we're on this topic, our current code allows a 100-foot setback from a residential zone, but that's a building setback. And I don't think that's what we're talking about here. We're talking about a setback for potentially a small substation, maybe the generators, and maybe storage of diesel fuel, I don't know what happens or what sugars look like, but we don't have anything in our current language that would outright control for something like that.
And the conditionally use permit would allow for that, or conditionally allowed?
Well, you talked about, and I don't know if this is covered or not, but the electricity consumption.
Yes.
Is there some sort of parameter, as you talked about, for this? Because it is, you know, it's, the footprint isn't large, but you will be using, you know, I assume a good amount of energy for that footprint. And what's a standard, or do we have something like that?
No, there is no standard.
Yeah.
Okay.
So, yeah, I mean, that's right. There is no set standard here. I mean, for like a 200,000-square-foot data center, for example, you're looking at 200 megawatts per year for electricity, which is a lot of houses worth of electricity, if you can imagine that. But as far as looking at that issue from a land use zoning perspective, I don't think that's really what's going on. I mean, I think, at least in Virginia, my experience is that's been more kind of addressed with the regulators, Dominion Energy, which is the big power company there, and through that, that way. And so I think that's kind of what would be the route there.
I guess the other question is, with this being a topic, and the other topic earlier, does the city have a forecast for energy usage if we build something like this and then households, 20%, 30% of households want to get electric cars? How would we manage that, since we're talking about energy consumption?
I don't really think it's just, in terms of servicing this data center use that's on the electric provider, can they support that use?
Yeah, probably separate pages of FirstEnergy. Right.
Because that's where the, I mean, they put them in, they can say.
They're going to have to do a power sharing agreement, you know, PPA, you know, a connection agreement, or whatever, right? There's a million different things that they would have to do with the electric company to get to connect that. Again, my experience is in Virginia with Dominion, but it sounds like there's a similar situation here, so that would be subject to all of that.
I mean, we've got 100,000 square foot data center here for like, at the line. That started off, that data center started off, it looks to me like, as my accessory use to the office. And then we expanded, and the planning commission and the planning consultant, you know, I don't think anything was thought of that particularly. It's in the heart of the, what was the I-3 district? It backs up to other industrial users, and I don't think there was really an aesthetic concern, and clearly, the electrical needs have been met.
Anything else, Ed?
Steve? So, the good thing is the proximity of this area, because it's serviced from the Chamber Road substation, which they recently upgraded and they keep expanding. So I think FirstEnergy knows, because the whole issue with, like, cars and charges and stuff, we're behind the eight ball, and they're trying to build the grid to support all this stuff. But they run a very efficient operation, most of these data centers do, and they're not like spiking the curve. I think it's, I mean, this is the new frontier, if you will.
Absolutely.
I mean, because, you know, everybody's in the cloud, and a lot goes to serve.
Well, if it's done right, and it's the right locale.
Yeah.
I've got a friend who's Director General of Services for Loudoun County.
Oh, really?
Exactly. That is a different kind of, that is a-
Hopefully, you didn't give him a call before.
No, I don't know, I didn't, no, but it's a different, it's a location-wise.
Right, so that's exactly right.
So their focus is to be on redundancy and backup so that they don't have outages, because when the servers aren't running, the data's not flowing, and that's a problem.
Right.
But, you know, I, this is the new, the new new. I mean, this is what we're in, data warehousing, you're right, it's warehousing, and I've been in a couple of data centers, and they're pretty phenomenal.
They are.
Just like, blow your mind. So I think the location, I think it's, you know, it's not going to be impactful to anybody, so I would support it, but it's just a matter of how we do that.
Well, I didn't ask Scott, I mean, are you in favor of a conditionally permitted use versus just-
Yeah, I was just more questioning, do they, do we consult the energy, you know, provider at one point and say, you know, can you support it or not? I mean, do they have an opinion on this? That was my question, in the process, does, you know, FirstEnergy or someone have a, are they notified?
So fortunately, I mean, for us, they had geared up, because we're in Chrysler, was there, they were supplying a ton of power. Now, it's kind of dropped off.
Yeah, that was-
So that's-
Different time.
Yeah, but that substation-
Sure.
And they've actually made a ton of improvement, what I've seen, just, I don't know for a fact that they've made a ton of improvements, but they, you know, if there's a demand, they're going to make it.
Well, I understand, I just didn't know if they were part of the process to say they can support it or not, because if there's a finite amount of energy, 97-degree day, you know, where does it go? You know?
No, I mean, that's a valid concern, and I guess, to the extent that I can say something there is, we are looking at, with data centers now, I mean, the technology is improving pretty quickly here. I mean, we're not just talking about like, you know, what we even put in with Verizon. I mean, this is, as this site gets developed and as it gets redeveloped or refurbished or whatever, I think it would start, it would start having a less and less, you know, toe on the local power strain. And I'm not just saying that, like, that is actually the case. Like, I know in Virginia, for example, we're looking at putting solar panels all over the roofs of these things. So, again, like that, but for that, I think that is, before we want to talk about it in this room, that's, we have to have that discussion, private and public, with the regulators, with power companies, and see what their, what their stance is on that. Because ultimately, at the end of the day, what they're willing to do or not willing to do is really kind of, they're really kind of the umpires here, you know?
But the upside is, the technology's getting more efficient as well.
Yes.
So-
Yeah, absolutely. I mean-
Sort of the needs are continually growing.
So you'll see-
That is not slowing down.
For sure.
You'll see a lot of these data centers putting solar panels on the roof, generating own power.
For sure, and like with the water, for example.
Hey, every little bit of-
Like the water for the cooling technology, I mean, that's getting a little bit better too. I mean, they're getting easier and easier to recycle this water, which is good, you know, they're not having to go back into the water. I mean, it's not that this water is really like contaminated with anything, it's really just for coolant that's running through a pipe, but obviously, would go back to the water treatment plant and go back into the system, so that's becoming less and less. So, you know, I, it's, I think ultimately, what we're going to see is you're going to have data centers that are, I think they're always going to be on the high end of energy consumption, they're probably always going to be on the higher end of water consumption, but as far as like, you know, for example, oh, I don't know, like, I know there might be a push one day for, you know, computer chips coming to America, right? And like, what's the demand there? Because that's going to have a high electricity usage. And I think that, those kinds of things are going to probably get matched a little bit more, and, you know, probably going to see it more like within that ballpark. So, you know, I think, you know, there, the benefits for allowing it here, I think, are really good, especially, you know, it is the future. You know, Twinsburg doesn't have it, I think it'll go somewhere else, and that place will be the data center, they'll have a data center, and, you know, there's going to need to be X number of data centers for X population in X metro region, right? And so this is a good location for that, for this area, and it just, it all kind of fits together really, really well here.
So I think, I support the conditional use permit, but I think you're right, we're going to have to look towards the future, because this is going to be, it's going to come back.
That's why I said, wouldn't even, as a permitted use, I think it would be doable, but we would want some use-specific regulations, and I don't, that can't happen in the short term.
Absolutely.
Because I think, even if I got really creative, I still think we have a dimensional standard that wouldn't meet the criteria of our charter, and it would need going down.
Yep, agree.
So I personally know of a few that are not impactful until the lights go out and those big generators kick in, because they're big, because they have the power of places. So that's, so I think, you know, in this area, that's not going to be an issue, because there's no residential impact, but if, you know, you know, get the residential area backing up to it, it could get a little wonky, so it's something you need to put on our radar.
And again, there's plenty of things that data centers have done to mask that. I mean, we've obviously seen like egregious examples in the news of like, you know, giant warehouse next to like, you know, suburban house, but like, you know, you could do a vegetated buffer, and it's pretty thick, where like, you couldn't see that on the other side, but also provide a sound buffer. See, that was solar farms a lot, actually. You know, setbacks, obviously, just that space limitations there as well, you know, sound, they have, you know, specially-made sound barriers for these things, which is really helpful. But Steve, to your point, I mean, the really, the time you're going to see the humming, you know, and the, you know, is going to be like generators. You know, where I live, the concern is always hurricanes, and when that happens, then you do go to the generators, and it does go, but, you know, maybe, I mean, I don't, I'm not familiar with the weather concerns here, obviously, maybe it gets cold and snows really bad or something, and that happens then, but that tends to be the largest issue there.
Thank you. Craig?
Yeah, I mean, I support the conditional use, I think it's a good addition to, I guess, the clientele here in Twinsburg. I guess detailed like on 50-foot height and all that, we'll have to go through those as they come back for review, because there's obviously 30-foot setbacks and all this for when you, if you want to go that high. And obviously, I think buffering the noise is probably my biggest concern of generators.
And it gives us the leeway by doing a conditional permit.
Yeah, where we can, we can write our own rules that they have to abide by, right?
For sure. I think in that instance, conditional use does make no sense, right? I mean, if it's tucked down way at the bottom of that map there, maybe not so much. If you put it maybe right next to that tan area, the residential, right? Like, it's obviously case-by-case. That's fair.
I support it.
All right, thank you. Michael?
Steve makes a good point. I mean, we could be bleeding edge or bloody leftovers, and this is an industry that's going to continue to grow, and unlike chips, if you heard about the Intel factory, this is not dependent on orders from, for the company that has the chip factory. From what little I know about the overall stuff, this is a, this is a smart application, and they're looking to find the right spot, we've got it here. There are other things, and as someone who has learned very much in recent months on what lanes to stay in, the, you know, everything with FirstEnergy and utility providers that will be taken care of downrange, and I trust Lynn and her guidance that conditional use is the way to go here, but I also concur with Steve, this is, this could be a good model for what we want to do downrange, and we got an applicant who seems willing to do that. I mean, I, you know, this is where I'm like, it's where we have high school students come and visit and learn and stuff like that, which has nothing to do with our authority, but I'm fully in support of it by conditional use.
Thank you. Scott, any questions or comments?
No, I would, I don't get to vote, but I echo the sentiments of my peers here.
Okay.
Looking at the permitted uses in an IM facility, I mean, I can tell you that I would rather have a data center, but a parcel that I owned than casting of non-ferris metals, for example.
Right.
So just in that vein, I, you know, to the point that Steve, you made, there's going to be a need for this, so I think the opportunity to welcome it to the community is probably a good thing.
All right, thank you. All right, well, we're going to come back to you, but don't go far away, because it won't be long.
Excellent. Thank you, gentlemen.
Thank you.
If, and nobody has issue, I would think that we could take the second item from work session and just push it into the regular meeting portion and have you go over it then.
I 100% agree with that.
Everyone's okay with that?
Yep.
Okay, then it's 6:54, we'll jump into the regular meeting agenda. The first item is the approval of the June 16, 2025 minutes.
Submuted.
As submitted? Any comments or discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
I wasn't there, so.
Yes, ma'am.
Yeah, but you read them.
Mr. Holger?
Yes.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shidov?
Yes.
All right, so the minutes will be accepted as submitted. Second item is the similar use determination. I told you not to go way too far. If you want to come back up to the podium, is there's anything else that you'd like to share with the Planning Commission?
No, I mean, just that, you guys actually were right, Michael, to your point, our client searched far and wide for a location for this. The stars are lining up really great. It's a great location spatially, just even on a micro level, even on a macro level, and they're decided, they're excited to market it, and hopefully, you know, we're going to get a good buyer, and something really great will happen there.
All right, and anything else? Steve? No, I'm good, thank you. Craig?
No.
Michael?
No, sir.
I'd like to make the following motion. Upon reliance upon representations made by the applicant and their representative, along with the submitted application and narrative for similar use determination from Shelburne Global Solutions and its affiliates dated July 30th, 2025, I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council that data center facilities be considered a similar use to those permitted in the IM innovation and manufacturing zone, and that the zoning and development regulations be amended to include data center facilities as a conditionally permitted use in the IM zone.
Second.
Michael, any discussion? Roll call?
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Holger?
Yes.
Mr. Shidov?
Yes.
So you have a positive recommendation from Planning Commission. Yeah, I don't know if you realize that, I really didn't really mention that before on that, that we don't have the final say-
Right.
-that it does go to City Council for the final determination.
Of course.
But it has our positive recommendation, and take that with, as you will.
Great.
That would be September 9th?
September 9th?
Yeah.
Okay, I'll wake up at 4:00 in the morning again.
September 9th?
Uh-uh, next Tuesday, not tomorrow.
Wow.
Oh, when this makes it to the-
Yeah. I don't, I-
Don't know if Shannon will get a chance to, I got you.
All right.
I don't idea what's on the line.
No worries.
Did you drive from Hampton Roads?
No, I flew, I-
I was going to say, that's a horrible drive.
Oh, yeah.
Well, hopefully, you got to enjoy something while you were hanging out waiting for us.
Oh, yeah, no, I'm staying in Cleveland right now, I should have stayed in here, though, it's a beautiful town. You guys are great, I really appreciate it. This has been one of the better Planning Commission meetings, with the stuff, so, no, I really appreciate it. Thank you guys so much.
All right, thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
All right, next item on the agenda is the text amendments to the planning and zoning code. Lynn?
Okay, so, the other is, kind of housekeeping, there's not a lot of the substance, most of it, we're just going to go through them down the line here, and start with the stormwater detention item. This language to add the infiltration practices as listed in the Ohio general permit authorization, this is required, Lynn, we're required to have it.
Okay.
I don't, I don't-
This is basically ORC directive.
Exactly. So that, that one's, that one's just isn't gonna really mean any discussion to us here, Steve. The second one, this one's kind of embarrassing, to be honest. This looks like a cut and paste era with our new code. We've got same definition for child daycare as we have for cemetery because they've got mixed each other in those definitions.
Oh, see, I always got a story to tell, my friends in Virginia.
The definition that I've concocted really comes from Ohio revise code.
Cut my kid off at the cemetery. Good lord.
I saw this, I was having a conversation with a planner in Hudson and they, they had a question about columbarians and then she said, hey, your cemetery definition's pretty messed up there.
Yeah.
So this is a little survey of definitions that I did. I looked at AI overview and that didn't have much to offer. And then the one that I've chosen really comes from the Ohio revise code. I looked at what the city of Hudson had since she was bashing me there and the city of Green had a decent definition and stuff, but we're comfortable with it. It allows for burials, it allows for mausoleum, which we have at Front Hill. We, it allows for columbarians, which we also have some of those at Front Hill. And this definition in the revised code allows for scattering garden sorts. That would be something new.
Track the ORC.
Okay, did you want, do you want to see if anyone's comments as we go through each one?
Yeah, we would like that.
I'm assuming nobody had a comment on the first one, I mean, that's required, we really don't have much choice. So the second one, I mean, I think it seems better than what we had.
That'd make, that'd make sense.
Anybody else have any issue with it or what?
I'm all a fan whenever you're tracking ORC definitions.
Okay, that's what I go with.
I think that'll make our daycare owners happy.
All right, so good, good on that one.
Okay, so then the third item in the downtown district, we have a table note that maxes out attached cluster homes at four units. And I, this language is found in our cluster home district. I think this note was erroneous in this downtown district chart, I think it just carried over. It is in conflict with other language in the downtown district that would allow for more block town hall scenario.
Any issues with anybody with this one?
So it's just an error of having the wrong-
The cable, no, carried over. We very much struggle with formatting, changing color.
Okay.
The next item is a certificate of appropriateness. That's something that we require for demolition of historic structure. We, in other, in other portions of this section, we have changed the language to local landmark list. Changing this historic register in this sentence to local landmark list keeps it consistent with the other language. And what it's doing really is expanding, it already reviewed anything on our local list, not just things, those that would be listed on the national register.
Just so somebody asked the question, this doesn't mean that it's easier to get rid of NHRP or NHRP eligible stuff because that's already separately.
Yeah, it's already separate. This doesn't, doesn't really make anything easier. It really just clarifies.
Right.
Doesn't really make it more difficult or easier, it just, it's just really good.
I could just see somebody asking that, so I wanted to make sure I got that on.
So the local landmark, local landmark list isn't more, doesn't have more, more things on it than the historic register?
It does.
So it should make it more, it's more restrictive.
Yeah, it's more restrictive, yeah, exactly.
It contains all the historic properties and then ones we would consider to be a local landmark.
Got you.
That's a step.
Anybody else with issue?
It's on the right, because in that direction.
All right, good to go on that.
The next one is regarding signs. We added our old code language that allowed the zoning enforcement officials to go out and physically remove any political sign placed within a public right of way. And we did that. Typically, the signs, if they went out of the intersection or a public right of way, the signs ended up in a pile at the back of the city hall. And if people were aggravated with that, they would come in, collect their sign up. But we have historically removed those signs. This, this being specific to political signs, it's not being content neutral. So how, we should not have had that language in there, but again, the administration likes the ability for, of course, to remove those signs and I think several council people like the ability for us to remove the signs. We're adding this language that we can destroy them without notice. We're not doing that. We are holding on to the signs for quite some time before they would end up in a dumpster.
Well, there, there are a bunch of advertising signs that are showing up now. Power wash this. Yeah, snow plowing, power washing yard.
Typically, they end up in front of the sidewalk or in the intersection. So that just really just allows us to re-line up and pour it on the ground. And sometimes people will call us and want the signs to go in another community, I guess, but if that seems offensive or aggressive that we can destroy without notice, we don't think, there is a times period there where people can.
I kind of like that. It seems like they should have a 30-day notice to come pick up your signs or that you can destroy it.
And we talked about that.
Something. Because then they may not know that they're not allowed to put them there.
I don't know how we, we have to say, well, this sign's been here for 20 days. But that becomes a little bit problematic, but we're sitting there for more than 30 days.
An authorized to order is a May type, is May type language, so you're fully able to do exactly what you're talking about.
Exactly, and I think that's how we, that's how we've always handled it and that's how we will continue to handle it.
I mean, I, but Craig's point, we stay consistent. That way, we don't invite scrutiny.
So, okay as is?
Yep.
Okay?
I guess.
Okay.
To date them, would be a little-
Would be hard.
There's probably signs back there from the last election cycle. I mean, in all fairness.
I mean, but, so without notice, you're at least gonna contact them and say, we have your sign.
No, we do not do that. We've never done that. Bingo.
So that's why you have, so it has to be without notice then.
They're taking the old board election signs for years, you think you're gonna-
They know it's gone, just, just read Twinsburg Roundtable or Twinford Tots.
Oh, I was gonna say, yeah.
They know.
It'll be there.
That's all, that's all I'm worried about, them being all pissed off that they're gonna destroy without notice.
Yeah, well, most of the time, they know that they don't belong there, but they don't have anywhere else to put them, so that's where they put them. And they long, until they get removed, they're, they're getting their point across.
Right, man. Sometimes it's calculated risk.
Yeah, exactly.
Well, the larger election candidates don't remove their signs. Only the local candidates do. That's exactly right.
You're right, you're right. Yeah, I've noticed that.
Yeah.
All right, so it seems like you have a majority support for, for that as well.
Okay, I don't, I don't, we touched on it at our last meeting. We removed the three-foot required setback from the afterwatch and gonna reel back in a little bit to allow the cycle to wash, just in front of the primary home area. We have a cube right now going to be doing that week, we've got a exact scenario, someone's building a house on Sunset Drive. It has a three-car attached garage, which maybe angles off the front of the home to the, to the one side, but it definitely extends well beyond the front of the house. This, I alter this, it allows for that configuration, but-
And specific to front-loaded garage?
It's specific to front loaded.
That's, that's the key.
Yeah. And it takes away the three-foot setback and allows it to not extend beyond the house. But then for the side loading, you could-
Do we have any rules on side loading garages?
We don't.
So we're just changing the front loading here and being silent on the side.
Yeah, side loading still has to be whatever front yard setback there is for the, for the-
Probably.
In general, but garage.
Fifteen feet in front of the house.
Yeah, as long as it's-
You want to pay a massive garage in front of your house.
But you just only see the, the window wall, mostly.
Right, this allows for a little bit more flexibility doing it this way without making it into a big ordeal with mass and, you know, all components of the front of the house. And given the very limited inventory of vacant residential lots, I would think this would be enough for our purposes.
No issue, anyone else?
No.
Okay, got support on that. That was the last one, right?
Yeah.
Okay.
I thought all easy ones on this one.
All right, just so everybody again understands that we do not have the final say on this, this motion will be a recommendation to City Council for their final approval. I move that Planning Commission recommend to City Council the miscellaneous zoning and development regulations proposed text amendments as submitted for the August 18, 2025, Planning Commission gave.
So moved.
Second by Steve. Just as a note, the reason why I based it on tonight's meeting data is because it was submitted without a date stamp on it, so that way at least we can tie it to what we reviewed. Any other comments? Roll call.
Mr. Cohen?
Yes.
Mr. Shidov?
Yes.
Mr. Shipley?
Yes.
Mr. Walker?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Holberg?
Yes.
All right, recommend 5.0. Scotland, that's in your good hands in front of the big boys.
We'll get, we'll get it handled.
All right. Next item is public participation, members of the community to address Planning Commission. Seeing none, communications and miscellaneous, Ed, anything?
No, sir.
Steve?
I have nothing.
Craig?
No, I have nothing.
Michael?
No, sir.
Scott?
Next City Council meeting is the 26th of this month. We'll be back from recess, so.